...our closed session.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Council is in closed session this evening on Conference of Labor Negotiator, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Donna.
Vice Mayor Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Payne.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Present.
Mayor Powers.
Here. Okay, we're going to have a silent prayer and then the flag salute, and we'll let our newest committee member, Mr. Craig Morris, start us with a flag salute, after a minute of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Donna, would you please read the video statements?
Uh huh.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city website at www.cigol.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, thank you. Council, is there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? Okay, what I would like to do that Liz usually does is I'd like to bring up before, right after this, the committee appointments of Mr. Morris, so you don't have to sit through the whole meeting. And we'll put that just before the presentation. So that will be next, Donna.
Okay.
Okay? So, you're on.
Okay. item is the Galt Historic Preservation Advisory Committee appointment, and the recommendation is to approve the selection of Greg Morris to serve as the Planning Commission representative to fill the vacancy on the Galt Historic Preservation Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Call for the vote, please. Singleton.
Aye.
Payne.
Aye.
Campion.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Morris, do you want to come up and say a few words or tell us?
A few words.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Mr. Craig Morris, Prime Commissioner, and I appreciate this vote of confidence. I'm not too sure what's involved with this, but they have to do with the downtown area. To my understanding, that should be fun. So, thank you all, and I appreciate the support. Any questions? No?
Nope.
We have enough time.
We thank you.
Be nice, Mike.
And we do want to thank you for volunteering, too. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Okay. So, we're going on now to the presentations from Denise Lee, Deputy Director of the Sacramento County Head Start, Early Head Start Program. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Powers and City Council members. My name is Kathy Kozick. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, and we are very glad to have this opportunity to present one of our programs to you. As you may be aware, SETA is a joint powers agency between the city and county of Sacramento. We run a myriad of human service programs. We have a workforce development department, and we have one of our One Step Career Centers here in the city of Galt, on C Street, and we have a myriad of Head Start operations throughout the county. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Deputy Director Denise Lee.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Powers and council members, for letting me speak this evening. It's a pleasure to be here and share a little bit about what Head Start and Early Head Start is doing in your community and kind of give you a little bit of background on what it is that we actually provide here. As Kathy mentioned, we operate out of Sacramento Employment and Training Agency. We've been operating the grant for about 32 years now. We started out with about 150 children and about $150,000 budget. Then today, we serve just over 5,000, to be exact, 5,339 children, zero to five, including pregnant women, with a $51 million budget to do our services to children. So, we do operate 120 centers throughout the county that allows us to be strategically located in all areas of the county, making it easy for families to access without needing massive transportation and/or easily accessible on bus, morning train, or light rail lines, whichever might be more convenient to them, and most of them in walking distance to our families. We serve within those 120 centers. We serve 120 classrooms. We also have the opportunity to serve in home, what we call a home-based model, for families that may not be ready to go to a school setting or might have medical fragility that prohibits them from being in a facility that we're able to bring the educational and the teaching opportunities into their home and work alongside with the parents. So, we've got center-based options as well as the home-based option for those youngsters. You can find us on school campuses, in churches, strip malls, apartment complexes, and throughout, making it, again, very convenient and easy for families to access us. We do serve low-income families, so those that are in the 200% poverty guideline. Our focus is to attend to their needs, not only educationally, but also from a social service perspective, looking at them as a whole child and allowing an array of services that really give them the boost or the head start that they need to really be prepared, not only for their school adventure as a child, but also for parents to learn some self-sufficiency skills and really get out there to support their child in their endeavors in an educational arena. We offer three and a half hours to 10 hours of service, so we offer part day as well as full day. We offer year-round services as well as traditional school-year services, again, trying to meet the needs of our families that are working and going to school by having extended preschool opportunities and infant toddler development care that cares for them while they're in school and are going to, while they're going to school and or working. There's no doubt that child development is a high priority for most of us. We want to make sure that our children have the most advanced opportunity to succeed in life, and our data shows that children that are exposed to a high-quality preschool program, whether it be ours or someone else's, do have an extra up, and with children that we're working with and Head Start coming from the lower levels of income guidelines, that they really are at a disadvantage. But by the time they are exposed in our preschool, they come in as prepared as those children who may be at a more advantaged background or more exposed to families that have educational backgrounds and don't work. But our real breadth of what we do is really the comprehensive services. Beyond the educational opportunity, we really do round our services out with medical services for children. That would include any screenings such as hearing or vision or blood pressure, physical exams, physical exams, et cetera, that allow us to have early detection and prevention for those things that might stop children from, again, being able to truly engage and participate in educational activity. It's very hard for children who have very sore teeth or teeth that are decaying, and they're not able to focus or eat nutritiously because they hurt so bad that they're not able to then focus in school. So, our goal is to make sure we're addressing all of those needs of our families and giving them access, not only to the medical care, but the dental care. We also have services that focus on mental health, so they would have access to social workers or psychologists or any of those professionals that focus on crisis intervention, whether that be immediate or long-term. We spend a lot of time individualizing our educational plans for young children. We recognize that children don't all learn at the same level, and therefore, we individualize to according where they come in with their strengths and their growing needs, and we target where we can work with them, that whether it be math or science or literacy or physical development play, et cetera. We also work strongly with parents, hand-in-hand with parents. We can only do what we can do in a short period of time we have them, but our impact is really on the parents, and our focus is on what those parents can provide side-by-side, really being the primary educator of their young child. So, we work with our families if they need to go back to school, if they need to help with career, job seeking, along with the SETA workforce development side. We also help families in goal-setting for not only themselves, but for their children. So, in a variety of ways, we really look, again, at the whole child and the whole family so that we can make sure we're really getting them that, the level they're coming in on and make sure that they have the best opportunities or head start and advance here to step pace. We do these services in the centers that we do, not only with the SETA-operated program. We also partner with four school districts and one nonprofit. So, we partner with Elk Grove Unified School District, Sac City Unified School District, San Juan Unified School District, Twin Rivers Unified School District, and then we have our one nonprofit operating out of Oak Park, which is the Women's Civic Improvement Club. These are all longstanding partners of 32 years along with us that help service in those 200 classrooms that we were just talking about. We have very diverse, not only linguistically but culturally diverse staff that can really partner with parents in their own language and in their own culture so that we make sure that that is a rich part of the educational opportunities that we provide and that we're speaking languages that represent the children coming in that are still transitioning in their language acquisition. So, we do do this across the county. We have two centers here in Galt. We serve over, a very large site here in Galt, I want to say right off Second Street. And there's 120 children that are served there in preschool, zero to five. We also operate Grizzly Hall, which is just on the other side of the freeway, and we serve 40 preschoolers over there as well. We currently don't have infant toddler services, but I'm hoping with these new Early Head Start expansion opportunities that were just announced to the federal government that we'll be able to bring some infant toddler services to your community as well, which will allow those families with the younger babies to come in and have full-day care as well. So, for those that are listening on the computer or online or are watching this televised, I would love to give the phone numbers that they can call and enroll, or if you'd like to refer families, our number is (916) 263-3804. Again, that is (916) 263-3804. And we do look for families for the fall upcoming enrollment and for any families that you might know in your community that can utilize services such as Head Start or Head Start has to offer. So, again, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before you, and if you have any questions, I have provided or will provide. This is our annual report. It shares a little bit of the data on our successes, the number of children that we've served, and as I spoke a little bit about some of the comprehensive services, health and those kinds of things, how our children are doing in that arena and as well as how they are doing compared to other children that may not have a kindergarten, I mean, a preschool opportunity and how they are really indeed prepared for kindergarten, meeting all those preschool foundations before they go in. So, I don't know if I can ask these a lot.
Sure.
So, if you have any questions, there's also an enrollment flyer there. If you'd like to make copies or pass it out or post it somewhere prominently, the families might be able to enroll. I'd love to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Payne?
Yeah. One of the concerns today is preventing childhood obesity, and I wonder if you address that in any way at Head Start?
Yeah, that is an excellent question. Thank you, Councilmember Payne. Yes, we do. We have a targeted focus on nutrition, which I neglected to mention, under health and dental health. I also neglected to say that we have a nutritious program. In many cases, it might be the most nutritious meal that the children actually receive in our program. We are USDA-funded and therefore guided by their very balanced meals in our classrooms. So, children in a part-day class would certainly get a breakfast and a lunch, or if you're in the afternoon, you get a lunch and a snack. In that, it's very balanced and it's very nutritious, low-calorie and low-salt and sugar, keeping it in the norms that we want. But beyond that, that's the time we have them. I think the question is really, how do we educate parents to make those same choices at home, to avoid those fast foods? So, we offer a variety of workshops. I'm actually really excited to say we partnered to do a targeted workshop at the Galt Center here on obesity, where families participated in active lifestyle, exercise, they did zumba class, and then they had a series of cooking inexpensively, but along their cultural realm, that was inexpensive but healthy and helped them change their lives. And that was a very, very popular workshop for them, and we hope to bring it back. But it replicates what we do throughout the county as well. Many centers also host gardens for children to learn to garden and to cultivate their own live vegetables and fruits, and then they do cooking activities in the classroom, tasting those and smelling those different things, and then share different recipes with the families as it related to the same activities in the classroom. So, definitely targeted on obesity awareness and prevention. We also screen children with their height and weight twice a year so that we're able to measure whether they're within the guidelines according to their stature and their age, and then refer them for either just nutritional counseling and/or they can also talk with our RD and have specialized counseling for them. We also specialize their meals. If they have obesity issues and or special dietary needs, then we customize our meals to their needs as well. So, we are really focused on making sure that that's part of what we do. Really, I think that families are moving very quickly, and fast food tends to be where they target the most. Most of us do, whether you're low income or not. We just are in a busy, rushed lifestyle, and that's what we've got. So, we really try to move away from that.
Sounds like you have a really good program.
Thank you.
And I want to take this opportunity to mention that the city is planning to put in a community garden not too far from your facility on Second Street. So, maybe we can have a corner of it for your children.
Oh, they would probably love that. And again, it's a great way to introduce it to new foods and new things that may not be naturally in their diet, especially fresh, fresh food and vegetables. That would be excellent.
Okay, thank you.
That was important, following up on that.
Vice Mayor Singleton, you said, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, just real quick. Ms. Lee, you mentioned something about the poverty guideline. What is that guideline, and is it based on a national average or?
Yes, it's actually put out by the feds. I brought one with, and I have some samples. If you'd like me to leave them behind. They are really low for qualifying. We do have the opportunity to enroll up to 10% of over-income families in our arena. But our target is really those, the poorest of the poor and the most vulnerable families that we can find. So, for an example, an average for a family of two, the monthly income could be just over $1,300 a month.
Oh, wow.
Their annual would be $15,730, as an example. However, any family that's on cannabis and/or is in foster care, those would automatically be eligible for our program. There would not be these qualifying issues. It would be those families that actually are working or going to school or have an income, whether it be steady or whether it be spread. That would be the guideline that we would follow. And they are federally mandated, and they roll out once a year. They don't increase quite heavily once a year, but they do roll out.
Right. I wouldn't mind having one of those.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's all I had, but thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. May I pass it through?
Absolutely.
I can probably have your progress.
Absolutely.
Yes. I have other copy.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
You're very welcome.
I want to say that I've had the pleasure of going to some of the classes and to some of your schools. I wear another hat, and we are funded by SETA, and it's very important in this town especially that we take care of the people that we target. I also wanted to say or to think, another thing that I have noticed, that the staff is so great. I mean, they're just so helpful and so, you know, into what they're doing and just really the great kind of people to be there helping our kids. And I want to thank you guys for that program, and you do a great job.
Thank you. We love being here, and you are, Mayor Powers. The staff there is so dedicated and so embedded in this community, which means they represent, they grew up here, they raise their children here, they babysat each other's children here, and they have a longstanding relationship. They've been operating out here for many, many years. Prior to us, there was Delta Community Action Agency, part of SETA, a delegate of SETA, and have continued and that staff has stayed on very dedicated. You are very lucky. It is a very tight-knit community, and they represent it very much.
Right, they're great.
Thank you for that recognition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the time, and have a wonderful evening.
And I'd like to say it's always nice to see you, Kathy.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye. Okay. Public comment, yes, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Do we have speaker sheets? Mr. Baldwin?
Good evening, y'all. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, a town, a city of character. It's a wonderful place. I got back from San Diego from all the traffic and congestion a while back, and it sure is nice to be in an area where everything is controlled. I want to first say, before I say what I want to say, is that I have high regard and respect for our police force. I think they're the best that you could get anywhere. The challenge I have right now is, there's been a few people, and then I saw it in the paper, so I thought, maybe it's about time we kind of clear the air and get it straightened out. I wasn't here for the opening of Walmart, but I understand it was the biggest they've had, or one of the biggest they've had, and it was so successful, it was extremely good. And mentioning this to other people and having discussions when I got back, they were saying, "Well, yeah, but you can't turn right on Fermoy to get out of that place." I mean, you've got to turn right. You can't turn left. And I says, "Well, fine, says turn right. Yes, I know, but we live over here, and it's just turning left." And I got to thinking, you know, someone mentioned there was a U-turn up there at the stoplight. Well, there's no U-turn at the stoplight up there. If you go towards the north, it's not a U-turn there. You have to turn left going to Rayleigh's or turn right and going back into Walmart. So, I thought, well, wow, this is a real challenge. How can we resolve this? Because the police have better things to do than write tickets and, you know, make friends and try and influence people by doing this, which isn't working. So, I thought, maybe, pardon me. When we were discussing all this, and I was at a lot of the meetings, I thought there was supposed to be a cement separator between Rayleigh's and Walmart, so you couldn't go to Rayleigh's and you couldn't do anything there. You had to turn right no matter what. And maybe I, maybe I'm wrong, but after thinking about it, you know, that would solve the problem, I think. Just put a six-inch or eight-inch cement deal and maybe even a sign, right, turn right in the middle of it. And then the police can do what they should do and going around neighborhoods and looking at them and watching people and getting these gang members and just keeping an eye on the public. And that would be a simple solution, instead of taking an officer and putting him over there and start looking for people turning left instead of right. It's so easy, and the temptation is there when you see it like a little kid. Don't touch this candy, you know, you can't eat it now. You almost, what the heck? Let's just turn left here, and no one's going to see us or say anything, because it's so easy to do, or go straight across. So, why not put that hitter divider in? I'm just asking right now because I thought we were going to do something like that. And I was against it. I thought, well, gee, we can go either way. But now, thinking about it now, I think maybe it's time that you do something about it. So, if that may be in your thoughts or your plan, that's an easy solution, in my opinion, and the police can go on and making friends and influence a lot of people instead of being negative with them and finding them a $250 ticket. So, think about it, discuss it. It's a challenge, it's not a problem. It's an opportunity for you to make it better. And Walmart's doing a great job over there, and I think our police department's doing the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. I think as it was explained a couple of meetings ago, which you were here, Al, you want to take it just a little bit, Jason, and say it's Caltrans that's responsible?
No. That's separate.
Yeah, and if it's topical, I certainly, the problem that Al talked about at the last, you know, I went out of Fermoy, and we had talked to Walmart, but now the four-way controlled stop.
With the right turn only.
Thank you. Four-way controlled stop. And at one point, it was not designed as a four-way controlled stop. It was just going to, there was going to be a left turn restriction because you didn't want people heading that way. And I think maybe there was a little bit confusion on Walmart's part as far as what was ultimately going to go in there. And we've since kind of recognized the issue and realized that it doesn't really make a lot of sense for people not being able to turn left there to get back into their neighborhood when you have, you know, four stop signs. It actually becomes a safety issue when you have people turning left when they're not supposed to, because then people don't expect them to do that. And I think we're right now having some discussions with Walmart to how to resolve that problem. So, we don't have necessarily a solution right now, but we are having discussions about the best way to resolve that issue.
We're also wanting to go across the street.
Go straight. Because right now, you have the [inaudible].
Yeah.
The whole issue, it was not a traffic issue. It was an issue of the neighborhood. The neighbors didn't want, kept people coming out of Walmart, turning left to go back to their house that they just came from. I mean, that was-
Some neighbors.
Some neighbors, yeah, and that's just the issue. Those were, I guess, the vocal neighbors who were in opposition. So, I understand it, but it wasn't, it wasn't done to mitigate traffic flow. It was done to satisfy area residents, at least some area residents. So, I-
It wasn't a requirement of the city. Walmart did it on kind of their own. I think what Kurt's saying is right. If they voluntarily said, hey, well, here's, you know, one of the things we can do to help address that concern, and I think now they're hearing from more of the neighbors, like, hey, wait a second. You know, because you heard from a, you know, a handful of people that don't want to be able to go back in the neighborhood, they're hearing now from hundreds of people that say, well, that doesn't make any sense. We want to go to our neighborhood. So, I think-
Well, we want to go across the street.
Or we want to go across the street. So, you know.
It's unfortunate because it, I don't know how much traffic, you know, how much traffic there is there, but it is unfortunate for those people that, you know, don't want to make illegal turns to go home.
Yeah.
And I don't know, Steve, have we heard anything back from Walmart on that yet? Do you know?
As of last check, a couple days ago, they were running it up their, sort of their legal flagpole. Maybe one other fact the council would recall is that Walmart, the initial applications were resisted through a lawsuit over a number of issues such as trafficking in neighborhoods. And so, they were required to do certain things, but they took that one step further than the city actually mandated. And I haven't seen anything in a settlement agreement that required the through or left turn restriction on Fermoy. We did require some restrictions out onto Twin Cities at Caltrans BS. But, so we've approached them as Mr. Berman has indicated about modifying their pork chop on the Fermoy and perhaps removing the right turn only sign, which was not a requirement because of the original litigation and some of the commitments made by Walmart in some of the hearings.
They're trying to confirm that they don't open themselves up to a lawsuit if they accommodate that.
Thank you very much. Now we're, did you, no? Okay. The information and consent calendar, would you please read the eight items? Donna?
Minutes of the special meetings of June 2nd and July 1st, 2014, and the regular meeting of July 1st, 2014. City of Galt warrants, award of contract for the 2014 pavement project, reinstatement, restatement and affirmation agreement with California Department of Transportation for the Twin Cities Road/Highway 99 interchange interim improvements, approval of updated competitive bidding waiver list, rejection of bids for the Vintage Oak Lift Station Improvement Project, authorization for contract change order and supplemental appropriation for repairs to the Fumasi well, and the treasures report for period ending May 2014.
Thank you very much, Donna. Do I have a motion?
This will move.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Mayor Powers? Aye.
Now we're at the city manager's office and Cost Road property sale, please, Jason.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My pleasure to present this item to you this evening. As you may recall, the city owns approximately 16.1 acres on, south of Cost Road, across the street from Meadowview Park. We purchased that property back in 2001 for approximately $185,000. We used Quimby Parkland funds, which we collect from developers at the time of application, to mitigate their impact on future parks. We currently lease the property to a neighbor, a property that's just to the west of the city-owned property. Ed Mosher and his wife, operating under the name of Sunny Creek Farms. They have a horse farm there and they are currently leasing our 16.1 acres. They installed a fence and been doing some work over the last year or so. Initially, they wanted to buy the property from us and we said no, partly because property values were so low at the time and we didn't know what some of our, you know, future park signs were. So we declined, instead entered into this lease agreement. And they've been persistent and recently came forward with another offer to purchase the property from the city. They made an offer of $160,000. We since went and talked to some of our own appraisers, well as some local real estate professionals to ascertain the true market value of the property. And we, in negotiations with the potential buyer, came to a tentative agreement of $250,000 for the purchase price of the property, which we believe is the fair market value of that property, which is also contingent on city council approval this evening. So the question then is, why? Why would the city consider selling that piece of property that we bought a number of years ago for a future park? And I think there's a couple of different reasons. First is kind of park priorities. And I think right now the city has a priority of continuing with the development of Walker Park, Phase 1B, which is the next phase, which includes a lot of the same amenities that the future, this future park would have. Walker Park Phase 1B would have two new baseball fields. Part of what would be built ultimately on this Cost Road site would be two baseball fields. So there's not really, in our opinion, a need to do both. And so if you're gonna do one, our preference is to finish out the development of Walker Park, take that $250,000 and use it for that, for that purpose. We did take this to the Parks and Rec Commission at their last meeting. They voted 3-0 to recommend approval to the city council as long as that money was used for the Walker Park expansion, which it would be. It goes back into the Quimby Parkland fund. It can only be used for future park purposes. The, there are a couple of different alternatives that the council may wish to consider. One is to put the property up on the open market, hire a realtor and try to represent the city in selling it. Staff does not recommend this. We have a willing buyer who's right next door to the city's property. We believe that the purchase price is a fair market value of the property and we would have to be forced to pay an additional commission to a real estate agent and so forth, which we don't think is necessary. Other option, of course, is just not to sell the property, hold on to it and use it for a future park down the road. We believe that it would be probably decades before we're able to develop that park because once we're done with Walker Park, we'll be moving over to the east side of the freeway with the Eastview Development and other new developments on that side of the town. They're gonna need new park facilities in those new subdivisions. And so the need for this park is not really there. In addition, the expansion of Meadowview to the south prevents, I think, a somewhat of a safety issue for children. And the Cost Road is relatively a busy road. It will only get busier as more developments occur over there. And getting kids back and forth from one ball field diamond to another across that busy road, I think, could be a safety issue. So for a lot of those reasons, we're not recommending holding on to it. We believe it's prudent to go ahead and dispose of it right now. Property values have been increasing over the last year or two. We think right now is as good a time as any to sell. And so staff's recommendation is that the council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager execute the purchase and sale agreement with Edwards J. Mosher and Geraldine B. Mosher in the amount of $250,000 for the 16.1 acre parcel and approve the budget change form in the amount of $250,000 in Quimby funds for 1415. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Council?
I presume that the lease payments will continue until the property closes or transfers.
Yes, which is January 15th.
And I, looking at this, I didn't see, there is no deposit on the, to go into escrow, to start escrow?
On the purchase and sale agreement?
Yes.
No.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't require a deposit?
We didn't require a deposit because of the fact we already had a lease arrangement with them and because we weren't actively selling the property, they had come forward with the proposal. Normally, a deposit is required if you select a buyer and then they back out and you have to go back out to Margaret to sell the property.
The lease, so we have a lease with them. What's the term of the lease? I'm just curious.
Like the-
Yeah, is this a month to month or is this an annual?
No, I think it's three or four years. We're in the second year right now. So, and they just paid in May or June for this upcoming year.
Oh, I see.
So, so they've paid for the full, this full next year.
I see.
So if we execute the, if the purchase goes through on January 15th, then there'd be a little bit of a credit there back to them at the end.
Council? Anyone else? Well, I think it's always nice when we make some money for a change. That's a pretty good thing. So can I have a motion, please, council?
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now we're at the cultural and recreational department and that's the Gore Aquatic Center expansion. And that's Steve Armando.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before y'all be bringing staff report for the Gore Aquatic Expansion. But one of the reasons for the expansion is over the last several months, patrons of the skate park, ages ranging from preteen to adults have become, have been hanging around the park area in front of the skate park. They've lately become unruly and have exhibited aggressive behavior. Examples of that were yesterday at our senior center, at the Chabola Center during Senior Bingo. Two skateboarders rode their skateboards into the hall, refused to leave when threatened to call the police. They basically said, "Go ahead. They're not gonna do anything to us." Last Thursday, I found three of them riding in Chabola Center, myself when I was driving by. Had to kick them out. They became, you know, they were yelling at me from afar and then as I walked towards them, then they walked out. They spit on the Parks and Rec office windows, broken glass near our personal vehicles, broken into our electrical boxes in our landscape area to charge their phones, graffiti the area, and doing illegal drugs, majority selling of marijuana every time we walk in and out of the park. These actions have created nuisance for our swimmers, our parents and staff at the pool, along with participating special interest classes at the Parks and Rec Office and Parasite School. And looking for solutions other than temporarily or permanently closing the skate park, staff had developed a three-phase plan. Phase one was to relocate picnic benches from the grass area in front of, into the aquatic center. We've already done that. Phase two, relocate the entrance of the skate park from the Chabola Avenue to the existing entrance that can be accessed through the Parks and Rec Office parking lot. We've done that. This also gives us a clean line of sight with our cameras since that way we can keep a better eye on the area. What we're here for now is the, Phase 2B is to install a fence along Chabola Avenue from the Aquatics Building to the existing fence next to the Parks and Rec parking lot and then remove the Aquatic Center fence that is currently there, expanding the picnic area and shaded area of the Aquatic Center. And then Phase 3, which will come back to council, remove the concrete pads that are there and replace with grass, add seating and really expand the Aquatic Center to help facilitate our swim meets, allow an access for the public to have a party, possible, a full party rental area. So staff is recommending that council approve the appropriation of $12,000 from, excuse me, Fund 11 from the Parks Capital for the installation of a fence at the Gore Aquatic Center along Chabola Avenue, incorporating the existing picnic area into the Aquatic Center complex. And I just, before I take any questions, I just want to make sure you guys understand that the amenities that we have in that park area in front of the skate park are also found right across the way at the sports complex. So the public really isn't gonna be losing anything. It's just on the opposite side of the Gulf Market. And I just think it'll enhance the Aquatic Center too. And I'm hoping this will solve our problem with the patrons of the skate park at this time.
Any comments, council?
I like, I, when it was first mentioned, I liked the whole idea.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't know what you said. Can you repeat?
When you first mentioned the idea of doing that, I liked it simply because, like you're saying, and most more recently, we had one young man who decided it was more fun to skate between vehicles and then they're getting nailed by one. We don't need the liability. That skate park was put there for the majority of the young men and women who wanted to skate to skate off of the streets. If they want to go out into the streets, then we need to shut it down. So this is the next step as far as giving them a place to safely do things. If they can't, like I said, the next step would be to shut it down.
Okay. And I'm sorry, because I was going that way and I didn't hear you start to talk. Councilmember Payne?
I just wanted to say, I wanted to let you know that when there are items on the agenda for the city council that might be of interest to be used, that I bring it up at the Gulf City Council Youth Committee, and I did that last night. And there were some good responses from the youth. The first one said, "This will not solve the problem." And I think we realize that. And some of the information I got from the police department is there, they contacted Seres, who has a really good program where they, at the skate park, and I think, Armando, you're aware of it too. They actually have programs planned for skateboarders and they take control back from, from the skateboarders. The other comment I got was, "Well, they'll just go someplace else and do these things and now they're gonna be angry." So we're just, and I don't know that we can solve the problem now, but I think it is something that we need to think about in the future, in a positive way. And I think Seres has a good, good program that we might look at. The other thing they said was, "You know, the water fountain doesn't work there." So I went out there today and sure enough, there is something that looks like a water fountain attached to the fence and it doesn't work. And so I asked Armando about it. He said, "It's not even for a drinkable water."
From what I was told, it is not drinkable water. It was hooked up to irrigation. So park maintenance had taken it apart, so they didn't use it as drinking water.
So I told the youth that I would check on that water fountain and see if we could get it fixed. I don't know if it would make that much difference for what happened with the Chabola Center and the seniors. But if we have a water fountain that is supposed to be used to drink from, then I think we should have it fixed.
Didn't you just say it was for irrigation or is it drinking water that was for irrigation or was it?
To my recollection of the conversation I've had with park maintenance, yes, it was tied in somehow into the irrigation, which meant that it shouldn't have been used for drinking water.
Well, I'm not saying that we should drink water, that we shouldn't. I'm saying we have something that looks like a drinking fountain, but it's not. And the youth think that it's just broken. So it should either be removed or something. If we have something that looks like a drinking fountain, it should be working or else it should be removed. So those are some of the comments that we got from the youth. They got pretty passionate about it, which is good to hear their comments. When I was out there at the youth skate park today, I talked to some of the skateboarders out there and they were very interesting, very colorful, to say the word. But when I left, I thought, you know, this is a group of kids and some of them were older. Some of them were, I guess, 19. Do we just ignore this problem or do we sometimes try to address it instead of just closing down the park area? And I know that that's not what you're suggesting, but I do think we might focus on trying to find a positive way to reach these young people that obviously are going down the wrong path. Just being out there and talking to some of them. Their language was very colorful, but they were friendly enough. I was out there in my purple dress and my necklace and they were in their skateboards and I obviously didn't fit in, but they were very, very friendly with me. So I would just suggest that sometime in the future, we look at maybe a program so that we can work with the skateboarders in a positive way. The other thing that I am concerned about, that I hope we can, I'll look at immediately, the skateboarders are coming out of the skate park into the parking lot out of control. We have seniors that are backing out and I think it's a dangerous situation. It also causes conflict between the seniors and the skateboarders. So I don't know, maybe we should recheck or relook at the exit going from the skate park directly into the parking lot. My comments.
Okay. So I just want to piggyback on that a little bit. If we do programs, it would be nice if, and I know that's another thing to add to it, but if it was age appropriate, because right now those kids that we're talking about are the ones that are out there all the time. And other people have complained because they won't bring their children there because of that. And that's the shame of it all. And councilman, vice member, Vice Mayor Singleton and I and Armando were attending a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Last week? Yeah, last week. And we came out, the language there was unbelievable. And they didn't see us. So it's really, something needs to be there. Well, that's what I mean. So they had nicer language than when they didn't see us, because it was-
Oh, no, they didn't. It was colorful, like you said.
Yeah, it was very colorful.
Okay. And I have something to say.
Okay.
I just want to make a point that not all these kids are bad. I don't want everybody to think that all these kids are bad. If, I would, I know it's an ongoing issue and it has been an ongoing issue. And I, I respect the choices that our director is making in trying to get the safety issue part of it taken care of and trying to make sure that we can cut down on the safety issues over there and the inappropriate language and illegal drug use. But I do want to say that I've stood over there and watched kids and they're not all bad. And this park was for those skateboarding, those kids to skateboard. But I would call upon, you know, some of these kids to regulate themselves. You know, I challenge them, "Look, they're gonna close this." You know, I, closing the park, I don't think is, is the answer. And I don't think Mr. Solis does either. But just as a control issue to alleviate troublemakers there that, you know, that they think that they can get away with problems. But I just want to say that, you know, if all these kids that do use that skate park, and I've watched them use that skate park and those things with handlebars and it looks like a skateboard with a stick, I don't know what it's called. If they just talk to their friends, say, "Look, man, if you're gonna be a dummy, we're gonna be treated like this because we're guilty by association." So I challenge them to keep their friends in line.
May I add that the skate park will not be closed. The area that we're talking about is the park area in front of the skate park. Staff is not recommending to close down-
No, I know you-
-the park right now. There has been discussion about a possible cooling down period to try and, "Hey, guys, you do need to kind of watch what you're doing around here or we may have to take other action." That's also mentioned in the staff report. But if you're, if you want to skate, the skate park is open. This will not impact the skate park at all.
How many people actually, I mean, how many children actually frequent the site? Are they the same ones?
I mean, when I just left there to come to this meeting, there was probably about 50 kids in that park, in the skate park.
Fifty five-year-olds?
I would say 50 kids. I mean, just looking at how many in the age range from, I haven't seen that many before. I've seen 20, which is usually, this is the most I've ever seen. I mean, they were just all over that skate park.
Piggybacking on top of that, would you say the majority of them were behaving themselves?
I heard colorful language about six times on the way from my front door to my car, yelling, screaming. I did not smell marijuana. I, you know, and so-
But no destructive actions, anything of that nature?
Just the yelling. And they're so close to the Aquatic Center where we have the younger kids there, where you have the four, five-year-olds, where you have the families, the parents. And as a parent, I would be upset having to have my child listen to that while they were swimming or just in that area.
Or get high on smoking, stuff like that.
Right. And I think the chief can attest to the number of calls that we've had at the skate park for these, for this type of behavior. And if you'd like to hear from him.
It just seems to me that there needs to be a program established too. Because if you have troublemakers, they shouldn't ruin it for everyone, including those people that are in the aquatic center. So, you know, I would think that, you know, hopefully staff can come up with a program whereby which, maybe there's some form of monitoring of how you even get into the park, into the skate park area. And those that don't behave, they leave.
We have done that in the past, not while I've been the director. It's been probably about four or five years ago. I would hesitate in sending any of my staff out there right now just because of the, how aggressive the patrons in that era have become.
Well, and that's a problem. And that's a problem that shouldn't be. I mean, if you're not gonna go out there, certainly no one from the public's gonna go out there.
I agree with you. I've been talked to, talked back to, and I'm a big guy. You know, they have no regard for any authority out there.
Well, there has to be. I mean, I can't believe- Well, there has to, I mean, I can't believe all the kids are that way. I mean, there, there has to be a certain limited number, I would think. I, 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 I don't know, I, I would like to see something come back from staff, uh, pardoning with the police department, and come up with a program, because that, that, that should not be tolerated. It shouldn't be tolerated by, by you as an employee, or the seniors, nor the people that are in the aquatic center.
Do you think it's basically the same people? Because, 'cause I don't see any, like I said, I've got parents that will not take their children there.
I've recognized probably about a half a dozen kids, you know, that I'm continuing to have problems with.
Do you have a problem?
From the, from the public?
As soon as the chief is down, I'll bring the public in. Okay?
Armando and I have, uh, talked at length. It's not just the kids as far as for the fencing wants and the movement of the picnic tables. We had some homeless people, um, hang out there, make threats and stuff to some of the, uh, employees of the area, and I was in total agreement as far as putting the fence up there and such, and that off. Uh, we've also had lengthy talks regarding the fact, as far as if you contact their parents as far as these kids, and give them a trespass warning if they show back up, and we'll cite or arrest them. But one of the things we were doing today was talking, uh, Vice Mayor Singleton, myself, and the two lieutenants regarding some kind of a program at the skate park, 'cause I'm of the same of belief that, um, these kids are creating a problem for other kids that don't wanna go over there. And so, we were talking about one of our PAL events to be there and, um, get some of the other kids that wanna come skate. We wanna identify the problem children and get them out of there, and don't let them return, so they can't ride into the senior center or anything else. And, uh, so I think we devised a plan to address those as far as the kids that are a problem, and I think, uh, within the next few weeks, we'll have some kind of event at the skate park that will be sponsoring through PAL itself.
Oh, good. That's great. I'm glad to hear that. Sir, did you wanna say something? Did you fill out a speaker sheet, please? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
How are you doing, Council? My name is Daniel Hampton. Um, there's two problems that I, that I have. I appreciate Mrs. Payne. I actually have a grandchild that is two years old. I've had more trouble with police officers using their dogs and going poop on my yard and cussing me out than I have at being at the aquatic center. My family goes to the aquatic center. I have five children. They all range from, well, I call my grandchild my child, if, I'm sure you guys do, too. But I also have a son that is, a daughter that's five, a son that's seven, a son that's ten, a daughter that's, uh, fourteen, and daughter that's seventeen. I have been at that park. I've had no problem whatsoever at that park, and if you look at what my dual park has done, they had a similar situation. They came up with a program, and the whole thing changed around. If no one's willing to go over there and monitor it, I'm out of school this week. I will spend the time in monitoring people going in and out. I have no problem doing that. But closing the park, all we do is we're gonna put, my, my seven-year-old son is not smoking weed, he's not cussing whatsoever, but he uses that skate park, because he bought a skate park, uh, skateboard to be like twenty hot, which they all wanna be like, and so he uses that. Not one, uh, adult or any other has bothered him whatsoever while he's there. I have no problem personally monitoring it, that, I'll sign a paper, whatever, and making sure this is not happening. If we block these kids from having a place to go, they're gonna be throughout our neighborhood, and then we're gonna have trouble. Right now, we have it in a combined area. If someone is disobeying the law, such as an officer's dog going poop on my yard and then cussing me out in front of my grandchild, that's a problem. Then we address that problem. Now, these kids that are cussing and are smoking weed, or whatever it may be, all we have to do is cite each one of them and say, "If you do it again, you're not allowed here." Period. And if they come there, they get arrested. But for the young kids, there's nothing else to do. We don't have a big area engulfed. If we kick that skate park out, we're gonna put them to the softball diamonds over there, and we do not have a skate area for them, so what's gonna happen? They're gonna be in the road skateboarding. Then the city's gonna have to worry about what happens if they get hit by a car, because we are not, we're putting our youth in danger.
Mr. Hampton, look, Mr. Hampton, we're not talking about closing the park.
No. No, but his original thing is, is he wants to gate, gate off the area where they're able to sit. It, the kids, what they do is, my kids personally, they go up there, and they have thickness, they bring their Lunchables and sit right there. He wants to gain that off and make that all the aquatic center, so it gives no room for, uh, for the kids to be able to do anything. And, and the only way that they can get in there, which is lost most of the time, is go through the rent center. I've been there many times, so, and I walk there, by there every single day.
Mr. Hampton, your time is up.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
May, may I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
We've, uh, added a picnic table inside the skate park area, so people can still use it. We, we do have parents that do take their kids there. Um, one of the, I was approached by a citizen saying, "Hey, where's the benches?" You, uh, you know, I usually sit on them to watch my grandkids, and I informed him the holes over there, we're installing them now. It's installed there currently. It's under a shade tree, so there, there is a picnic table there for them to utilize to do that. And again, we're, we're not asking to close the skate park. Skate park will still stay open.
Right. And like, uh, the chief said, and you said, and Mike said, um, you're gonna work on some solutions. And that's, uh, you've heard what's going on, and, and I, and there is grass over there, too, where the picnic table is, so.
I just wanna make one more statement. Um, when I was there today, the skateboarders mentioned that the location of that table is, uh, in a dangerous location, where they come down off of a equipment. They are, um, sometimes running into the table, so maybe, I think it's portable, maybe it can be shifted to the corner or something.
There's cementing footings, cement footings on that table. Uh, when we did initially start Phase One and move the tables from the grassy area, uh, talking to the skateboarders, they asked, "Hey, can you put the table back in here for us?" We said, "Yes, where do you want it?" In a shady area, so we put it under the shade tree, the, the, the one that's gonna get the most shade throughout the day.
I'm just repeating their comments, that, um, the location was in, in a, a place where they were running into it.
Right. We, we put it under the one tree that was there, uh, that would, that would get shade instead of footing it in the sun.
I know, you can't, please.
Please, all the people all die.
Right.
But I just thought I'd share that comment with you.
Okay, um, any other comments from anyone? Anything? Okay, so then I, can I, um, call for a vote, please?
I think so.
Well, I, I mean, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah. Motion first.
That's what I meant.
I'll say-
Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, well, I'll second.
Okay, call for the vote. Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
No.
Campion?
Yes.
Cruz?
Hi.
So, passed, uh, four ayes, one no, uh, Councilmember Payne. Okay. Segura Aquatic Center Expansion. That would be you again. Oh, we got it. I, I guess that thing went on and on, and, okay. Delegate authority to the city manager to revise and amend the Gulf Market rules and regulations and establish temporary or promotional fees.
Good evening again, and, um, I'm here on behalf of the Gulf Market this time, and the Gulf Market is a city-owned and operated flea market, and is the only city-owned and operated flea market in the state of California. As with any other business, the Gulf Mark- Market is susceptible to fluctuations in the economy, purchasing trends, and other uncertainties related to running the business. And no fault to staff or council, under the curtain, um, structure, should staff wanna bring something to council, it could take up to five weeks to, um, get a rule or a fee amended, and at that time, it, it takes too long to react to sudden trends in, uh, the weather, uh, rule issues, vendor issues, um, and basically what we're here today is to ask that you allow the city manager, give him the authority to implement, uh, temporary daily specials, to quickly respond to those daily or weekly weather conditions and customer market vendor trends, and to allow him to amend the rules as necessary. Um, all changes to the market fees and rules and regulations would be based upon the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Director that is determined to be in the best interest of the Gulf Market, and should there be any recommendation, any long-term recommendations, uh, to the rental fees, city council, uh, approval would still be required. So, at this time, just to, to basically run a, a business in an efficient manner, we're asking you to delegate the authority to the city manager to revise and amend the Gulf Market rules and regulations and establish temporary or promotional fees. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Um, in reading this, there's quite a few, um, uh, responsibilities and authorities already delegated to the city manager. What, what kind of additional regulations, and I'm more questioning the regulations than I am the fees, would you see appropriate?
Last, uh, I believe it was two, a little bit over two years ago, Councilman, um, Councilman at that time, Randy, uh, sorry, Sheldon, um, had brought forth an issue where, um, there were some knives being sold on a front counter that were easily accessible by the, by youth, and nowhere in our rules and regulations did it allow for us to state that they had to be behind a counter. Uh, that was one that we had brought to council and had given temporary, uh, authority to the city manager for a certain time limit to make certain amendments to the rules and regulations. Those are things, again, had to wait three to five weeks to bring to council versus just saying, "Okay, this sounds good, this makes sense, let's move forward and change and amend the rules and regulations to establish that all knives be behind a counter and must be eighteen to, to look at." So, things like that, that's the only thing that has come up in, in the recent years. But just to allow him to, to have the authority to make quick, uh, changes will be helpful.
The, uh, resolution says the city manager is responsible for the day-to-day supervision and administration and operation, um, which includes the market. Um, I guess this is more directed towards the city manager. Do you feel like you will be, um, having time, or do you think you'll be expending more time on the Gulf Market than, than currently?
No. This, this is, uh, you know, I'm responsible for the day-to-day operations of the whole city. And so, any of the recommendations, they would come forward to me from the Parks and Rec and the market staff and say, "Hey, we feel like we need to make these adjustments in order to operate the market more efficiently, in order to, you know, adjust to market demand and so forth." I'm not gonna have any additional responsibility, so it's not, but, you know, everything falls under my, um, kind of authority to manage day-to-day operations, so this isn't really delegating authority to me as much as it is delegating authority to staff. So, um, still gonna be run by market staff, Parks and Rec Director. They would come to me with any recommendations, and I, instead of them just doing it unilaterally and saying, "We're just gonna do it without telling anybody," they have to come to me to get my approval before they implement any change, which is much more, uh, you know, timely. They can come to me in a day as opposed to coming to the council, which could take four to five weeks. So, that's the approval process, just to go up to my level, as opposed to having to go all the way up to the city council's level, so.
So, you're not gonna move your desk out to the market?
Not my, not my plan. No.
Um, the other thing, then, as far as expenditures, will they still be under a certain amount of money that, um, can be spent without coming back to the council?
Yes. None of the other rules have changed. Same purchasing requirement, same authority exists. All this is dealing with specifically are the, the rules and regulations at the market, as well as the ability to establish temporary or promotional fees. All the, all the other rules and regulations remain in effect, so contracts that exceed a certain dollar amount still have to come back to the council. All those same things are still there.
Okay. Thank you.
Can't counsel, uh, Vice Mayor Singleton, you?
Uh, I just wanted to make, make something clear, and, and to my best understanding of this, um, this is also to have specials, if, if I'm, I'm not mistaken, such as like if it's a hundred and twenty degrees outside, we will give some kind of incentive to have our vendors come out, or some, to-
Is it two per point?
I'm being extreme, but, but I'm using that purposely to, to get the point across, and, and that's what this is basically about, uh, to help, uh, keep that revenue coming in for our, our market, is what I'm to understand, correct?
That's correct. And we, we talked to the council, I think, in the past about the susceptibility of the market to a variety of different things-
Right.
-and how reliant the, uh, of the city is on that revenue source, and I think this is our recommendation to you about how to keep the market successful, able to really treat it more like a business operation, which every other market does across the state, in order to keep the revenues flowing. And so, this is a recommendation from your, from your Parks and Recreation Director and from your market staff about what's gonna be, uh, what's gonna give them the tools necessary to keep that market successful. And so, this is what they feel they need in order to keep that market successful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campion, did you-
Yeah. On the, on, on the second part of the resolution, it talks about to, uh, the authority to implement temporary promotional fees. Can you expand on exactly what you're talking about there, and how that? I understand, you know, rainy days or, or hot days, but how, how are you going to promote that, and what, and under what circumstances and time?
Honestly, we, we would have to come up with some. We're, we, in dealing, going to our National Flea Market, uh, conference in Vegas, and I, I also had the staff go to the California Flea Market Association in, in Southern California last week. We've become really close with the Denial family and their management, and we've been trading ideas on some of the things they do, some of the things we do, and one of the things that they do is when it hits a hundred-degree day, they'll come up with a, a special. Um, I don't know exactly what that is, I can't remember what it was, but they make alteration, or changes to their fee table based on what's happening. I mean, if it's gonna be a hundred-degree day-
Right.
-people may not come out, but if they can get it at half price, they may still come out, so half of the rent is better than none of the rent. So, th- these are things that we've never had available to us, an opportunity to come up with daily specials, because again, there's, there's been times where if we wanted to do something, the four to five-week process would just take too long, and then some of the issues would have gone away.
How do you anticipate tracking the effectiveness of that?
I, I would have to see exactly what we're gonna do. I don't know what we're gonna do yet. We have, we don't have any proposed fees of, we haven't sat down and brainstormed of any daily specials.
Uh, you know, conceptually, I, I, you know, I agree with it, uh, but I think I'd like to know a little bit more about what this program is, and, and, you know, how it's to be implemented, and, and, you know, what are all the components of it? I mean, it doesn't sound like it's real complicated, but, um, I mean, I, obviously, there's gonna be some triggers that are going to say, "Okay, under these circumstances, this is the type of fee we may look at."
Cur- currently, we, we don't have any recommendations to implement next week. We don't have a set, "Well, if it's a hundred degrees, this is what we're gonna do. If it's raining for three consecutive, consecutive Tuesdays, this is what we're gonna do." We're, we're actually gonna see what the weather is, what the trends are, what we can do, look out to see what other markets are doing, and possibly implement some of those things, too. There, there is nothing said at this time.
To that extent, you know, I, I'm comfortable with, you know, moving ahead with that portion of it, but I would like to have a report back, you know, in some, you know, two or three months, you know, what, what was accomplished, or did, did it come into play? Um, and then that way, maybe you could more formalize, uh, uh, whatever the program is, so that, you know, we as council have an understanding of what you're doing out there on a day-to-day basis-
Sure.
-when you're given this authority. I mean, because right now, it doesn't sound like you know what you're gonna do with the authority specifically.
Right.
So, I think, uh, I have a little bit of concern about that, but I think, you know, uh, as long as this comes back in, in, in a couple of months, and, and, uh, we can see what's done, I think that's fine. I think that the bigger issue I have is with the, um, transferring all authority to amend all the rules and regs to the city manager. Not that I distrust the city manager, but I worked with the original consultant who put these rules together, and they've changed over the years, but the public input process that went into this was horrendous. And I know that the market vendors are very, uh, touchy when it comes to market rules, and I think that the whole idea of cutting that public process out of discussion and debate is, is, I don't, I don't think it's good. is, I don't think it's good. I do believe that if a need arises, that the manager should be able to react to it. And if he wants to come up with a temporary rule that's, you know, effective for 30 days, and that rule is then brought back to council, and if it's going to be a permanent change to the rules and regulations, and council decides that's okay, 30 or 45 days, whatever it is, but I don't disagree, you need to be able to react. But I think that then it gives the, those people at the market, and the public, to comment on whatever those changes are. So, and I think that's a reasonable accommodation to get what you want, but also accommodate the concerns for the public, the public participation process.
Well, okay, I, what it's, the way I'm reading it is it's just temporary or promotional fees, and sometimes you can come up with an idea the day before.
No, if you read under the first, unless I'm reading it wrong, under the first, the first paragraph, all authority would go to staff in terms of making any change to any of the, is that correct? Am I not reading?
Yeah, that's correct. The authority on the rules is, on all rules, the authority for the fees is temporary or promotional fees.
You know, and the last time we made a rule change was two years ago, is what you said, correct? And in that case, if something like that came up, I think addressing immediately makes sense, and then, you know, bring it back and let's have a formal process to amend these rules. But I still think it should be done at the council level.
Oh, you're talking about rates, correct?
No, I'm talking about the rules and regs. The rates aren't part of it. He's just talking about temporary promotional fee changes. Any change in the rate structure has to come to council, but this deals with all the other rules, where there, deals with vendor sick policy, vendor vacation policy, late payments. Any other rule, staff would have the ability to make an immediate change, no public input, and that's it. So I mean, the concern I have is, I mean, there's a, and there's a disciplinary process here too, that I know was, well, you went through that. It was, it was, it took probably a year to get through and finally, you know, weed out all the issues, and I think it, I don't know if it still works now, but it did work back then. And I don't know that it's really necessary to go through that process. I think giving, if this resolution were amended to read that the city manager has the authority to immediately amend the rules to accommodate whatever the need is, that amendment would be valid for 45 days. In the meantime, staff brings back a report of what that amended rule is and why, to make it permanent. So, that would be my proposal.
Mr. Barron, do you have any plans to make any rule changes, as far as you see it now?
I think the question is directed towards the Parks and Rec Director. This is a report from the Parks and Recreation, it's really from the market staff, they're the ones that are. I don't, I don't have any changes, nor would I propose any changes. Any changes would come from the market staff and the Parks and Recreation Director about changes they think are necessary. I'm simply the person that would, that would take a look at that, making sure it seems reasonable, and then either approve it or not approve it. But it wouldn't, like, I expressed to Councilmember Payne, I'm not out there, I don't deal with them on a day-to-day basis, so it really would be generated at the market level and at, from that department about what they feel is in the best interest for the market, and they would make the recommendation.
And Mr. Solis, I have full confidence in you, and do you plan on making any permanent changes to rules, regulations, or anything of that sort in the near future, or recommend that to the city manager?
The only change we have in the near future is to adjust our counterfeit policy, to make a little more strict. But that is currently under review of our city attorney, and we're working through that. That is the only thing in the horizon. There is no major changes to the, to the rules and regulations at this time.
Well, I think, I understand what you're saying now. I think maybe that last paragraph should just not be there, because we're talking about temporary stuff, and then down at the bottom, we put all changes. Maybe it should be saying temporary changes.
Where are you?
Yeah, there's two separate issues.
Right, there's temporary fees, and then there's permanent rule adjustments, which are, which are not, not raised.
Right, yeah, so that probably shouldn't be in this recommendation, correct?
Well, we're asking the recommendations for both.
Oh, that is the recommendation. I know, but it's, okay.
I just, we have no market vendors here tonight. And as soon as the things start changing, if, you know, one day they show up and then the next week, the rules change, they're going to be there in front of you.
Well, I, I don't.
And my concern is that, you know, there's a, you know, a public review process that's being completely left out of the process.
Well, I don't think that our director nor our city manager are going to try to chase vendors out. I think what we're trying to do is make sure that we attract vendors and we keep them and retain them, and to improve market quality of the market, not to chase them away. And I, and that's what it sounds like you're implementing to me, is that you want to make sure, one, that this stays in council control, and I get that, I get that, I do. But I, you know, don't, really don't think that our staff is going to be chasing folks away, or they're going to be making drastic changes that are going to keep vendors away.
I don't think that's what we're saying, but I think personally, it's two different issues that got brought together on one and was like one line item.
Well, there's two paragraphs.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
Two separate subjects. I think, I think my proposal would accomplish the same thing. Staff would have the authority to amend the rules, that authority would be valid for 45 days. During the 45-day period, that rule would come before council to be made permanent, period. It addresses their concern to address an immediate fix, and at the same time provides in public form for those that are, may be affected, not will be affected, may be affected, market vendors, public, to come before the council and discuss it. And the council have an opportunity to discuss it. And it doesn't sound like it's going to happen, or happen very often, but I think it preserves an important part of these rules and how they've been implemented historically.
I think Councilmember Campion has a point. I remember some years ago, I believe this before the current city manager, there was a lot of dissatisfaction.
Yes, it was.
At the Galt Market. And one of the things that came out of that was a lot of input from the vendors out there. And I think we built a good relationship, but it was a, it was a tough high. There was a lot of distrust and anger, and I think we, we don't want to get back in that position. And I think your suggestion is going to be effective in that you can make the changes you need, but also, the important part that I see in your suggestion is it gives a time to get some input from the vendors and to hear from them. And I think we've established a good relationship, and I'd like to see that continue.
I think, I think Armando and his crew have done a tremendous job in terms of relationship building and continuity, and I, you know, it has nothing to do with that, it just has to do with, I think, that, you know, there's been history here, and I just think it's a better process.
Yeah, I get that too, but to me, temporary and promotional fees don't mean we're going to bump it up. I think it means we're going to do something.
I think we're talking more about the regulations.
Regulations right now.
And rules, not so much the fees, but anyway.
Can we have this come back after we maybe go with the suggestions of Mr. Campion has recommended tonight, so we can get them full form, instead of just as an amendment?
Yes, sir, we can do that, but an alternate approach would be to, we could very easily modify this resolution to take out the portion dealing with the regulations, which is paragraph one, and the council could pass the resolution tonight, which would affect, which would provide the authority to implement the temporary promotional fees, and then we could bring a separate resolution back, which articulated the process that Councilmember Campion expressed on the, on the regulations. So if the council desired to do that, what I would recommend is that we modify the title of the resolution first, to say that the resolution of the city council, delegating authority to the city manager to revise and amend the Galt Market fees, period, strike rules and regulations in the title, and then strike paragraph one under the now, therefore, leaving paragraph two as is.
I would motion to do as the amendment as Mr. Rudolph has stated.
I would second that motion. Call for any discussion, any more to the question? Take call.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Campion?
Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And you'll come back, say, several months and give some reports on how it's implemented?
Yes, a pastor memo or a council?
A pastor memo would be fine too, just on how you're implementing it and how effective it's been.
Sure. We'd be glad to do that. Okay.
Okay, to you again, Armando. Do the operated concessions at the Galt Market?
Hollywood.
I'm back again. Okay, again with the Galt Markets, this time we're dealing with concession stand at the market. At the 2000, July 2011 Strategic Planning Session, staff was asked to look into the feasibility of operating a city-owned and operated concession stand at the Galt Market. Staff presented a staff report to city council at the May 29, 2012 city council meeting, and at that council meeting voted to not move forward with the concession stand at that time, but directed staff to return in a year with a, with a proposal. In June of 2013, the decision was made to postpone presenting that proposal to city council for one more year due to staffing shortages within the Parks and Recreation Department. Probably asked, what does the Parks and Rec Department know about operating concession stands? But currently, the city does own and operate two concession stands located at Sports Complex and Aquatic Center. Staff is recommending that, that we purchase a food trailer to operate a concession stand similar to those at the Galt Market. Will serve similar items as we do at the complex and the aquatic center, along with some grilled and fried items, as this trailer will allow us to do those type of things. The recommendation of staff is to operate the concession stand, as well as continue to operate, to allow the other, the current market, market food vendors to operate their food stands. We'll be running ours with them. We won't be asking anybody to leave. Staff did contact all food vendors and to notify them about this meeting and to get back some information on this from them. Some of the comments that we had were, they believe it'll be too hard for us to run because the business is too slow, not good to bring in because it's already competition from current vendors. Only suggestion to bring fountain drinks and have an ice maker because customers ask for it all the time, and current food, food vendors might lose customers and sales might drop. Those were the comments that we got from them. So by purchasing the trailer, this will allow Parks and Recreation a little flexibility to, to, with our special events. We can have this trailer operate during our Independence Day celebration, National Night Out, at our I Love My Park events. We also could utilize this trailer at the Walker Park Sports Complex. Currently, we do not have concession trailer out there. We could operate that until the one that is planned to be built there is built, but that is three years out. So costs in the current fiscal year, which is only nine months left by the time we order the trailer and start operating, would be a total of $109,843, with revenues projected to be $87,500. After the first year's revenue, revenues are expected to exceed expenses by $35,000 per year. So I'd be glad to take any questions at this time regarding that. I don't know if there are any food vendors, and I don't believe they are, but they were invited, they were notified of the meeting.
Can I ask you, Armando, could you be persuaded to offer some healthy foods as well?
Sure.
If we can or not.
Got it, educate the public.
If we can sell it and we're approved for it, because, you know, we still have to comply with all health department regulations, if it's something that we can do in that trailer, we'd be glad to look at that.
Maybe we could try, ought to sell some apples or something, and it's just an idea. You know, we're talking about fighting childhood obesity and being healthy, and it would be a good little promotion to include in the concession stand. Just a suggestion.
It's a good suggestion. Over here, to my right.
I want to, you know, what you said about the healthy foods as well, but the other thing I wanted to point out as well, you mentioned Walker Park, but we have a concession stand that hasn't been used as long as I can remember sitting on a community park. It would be really nice to have that out there at some of the baseball games.
We could utilize that out at Community Park also.
Councilmember Campion?
I'm just curious, how did you arrive at your revenue estimates?
We, we took the revenue that we have from the sports complex, which, when we host a baseball tournament. The estimate is about $1,250 in revenue for, for the tournament, and we assumed that we could probably match that at the market, with having the other 12 food vendors there in competition with attendance also.
I suspect, and I don't know what menus are out there, but I suspect that you're trying to hit some market niche that doesn't exist, maybe?
We have no hamburgers, no pretzels, no, we want to serve some breakfast, that kind of thing. We're, you know, we're not trying to duplicate, but there will be duplicated items on, on the menu, but in the best interest of the market and our revenue source, we're asking that, you know, we'd be allowed to sell this.
No, I think it's, I think, quite frankly, I think the city should have done this years ago. This is, this is one area where I think, you know, not to displace other, other food vendors, but I think there's a real opportunity for the city to receive additional revenue from this, this type of an undertaking.
And a chance to put other things on the menu, like we were just saying, you know, because, and release some healthy stuff, huh, Parker?
And not to go against what Ms. Payne said, but I'm open to corn dogs, I really.
That's a good one.
Keep my pinky.
Yeah, really, pinky.
The plans are that we want corn dogs on the menu.
Oh, that's okay.
I think we do.
So, if there's no more discussion, do you mind reading, please?
Thank you, Armando.
Donna, the action, approve the operation of a city-owned, of a city-owned concession stand at the Galt Market, the purchase of a mobile food trailer from Quality concession trailers in the amount of $53,926, the budget transfer forms appropriating funds in the amount of $109,843 for the purchase of a mobile food trainer, $53,926, signage, $2,000, equipment, $2,500, inventory, $19,000, health permit, $800, and staffing, $31,617 for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and in, and $64,956 in fiscal year 2015, 2016 for inventory and staffing, and recognize estimated revenues of $80,012 and $100,026 respectively.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Thank you, Donna.
I think there's one item on this event, on this particular item. I don't think it's a food trainer.
Yeah, I wonder.
Yes, it's a food trailer, not trainer.
Who are you bringing in, the top chef? Get out a corn dog? Healthy food.
So with that small change, I'll move the item.
It's been moved in seconds. Call for the vote, please, Donna. Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, Public Works, capital improvement program status update April 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2014. Thank you.
Are you done, Armando?
I'm done.
Okay. Madam Mayor and council members, this next item is a fourth quarter report for the year, fiscal year ending June 30th, a status report and update on the capital improvement program in the city. And we're pleased to report that, well, before I report, attached to your staff report should be, hopefully in color, a sort of a bar chart for the calendar year 2014, showing projects that are underway for the past six months or are ongoing in their various key project phases, so you get some idea of what staff are working on and will be delivering in the near future. We are pleased to report that there were four capital improvement projects completed in fiscal year 2013, 14, with four additional projects were under construction, and 10 projects are currently in the design, environmental, or bid phase, preparing for future projects. And I would like to commend the council for having the vision to invest in the community through the capital improvement program, and I'd like to commend our public work staff for the significant efforts to bring these projects to fruition, and having 18 projects in progress is an aggressive work plan for a city of our size in the last fiscal year. So we're very proud that we've been able to, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, we're just moving in a shaken town. Thank you very much. Now for the authorization of revocable... We have to... Oh, we need to receive it, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to receive it?
No.
Oh, not actually.
It's just not actually.
I'm having one of those days.
Sorry.
Okay. Authorization of a revocable encroachment agreement for Galt Place and delegation of authority for future revocable encroachment agreements. Mr. Winkler?
Madam Mayor, this next item requests council concurrence for the Public Works Director to enter into a revocable encroachment agreement with the owners of Galt Place. The item would also, the second request, would be to delegate authority to enter into future revocable encroachment agreements, which are deemed to be in the city's best interests, and that would be delegated to the Public Works Director if you concur, but subject to the review and concurrence of the city manager and city attorney. And Mr. Bill Forrest will provide a brief overview of the current revocable encroachment permit we're recommending, and at the conclusion, we'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Good evening, Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer with your Public Works Department. Thank you. Everyone knows where Galt Place is. During the construction, in the Old Town area of Galt, the lettered number streets were set up with wide street right-of-way, typically 80 feet from edge to edge. And in some places within the Old Town area, that means that the right-of-way extends to the building face. And in the case of the Galt Place, when it was developed, that was certainly the case. And, for example, there are foundation footings as they went through plan check, the spread footings would actually, underneath the ground, but still technically within the right-of-way, would extend within the right-of-way. There's also a number of things most prominent, which is the outdoor seating area for the Velvet Grill and Creamery, which was a change that was approved, and so that outdoor seating area is technically within the right-of-way for 4th Street. So when Galt Place was under development, we realized we had these encroachments, and we started work on a revocable encroachment agreement to, if you will, codify and regulate these encroachments within the right-of-way. But it was never finalized with the owners of the Galt Place. Recently, there's been some zoning changes to the Old Town area, most notably to allow wine tasting in the area, and the owners of the Galt Place approached Public Works about allowing a outdoor seating area encroachment. And the key difference from the Velvet Creamery, which was literally set in concrete, is that they were proposing kind of a decking of the three parking spaces that are in front of the suite, where they're contemplating placing a wine tasting operation. So with that approachment by the owners, it was decided to pick up the whole of the revocable encroachment agreement to cover the items that were, if you will, in play when Galt Place was first developed, as well as to allow this encroachment into the parking, the three parking stalls in front of Suite 150 for this contemplated use. Terms of what it's going to look like, they haven't made a formal proposal initially. They submitted, City of Sacramento, City of Long Beach, and a couple of other communities, City of Portland up in Oregon, had what was called a parklet program, which was to try and soften up some of the asphalt spaces and try to make them more livable, if you So in concept, that's what it'll probably look like. The key difference is that these parklets, as the name implies, is a public park, so to speak. But this will be an outdoor tasting area of alcoholic beverages. By the code, it would be required to be fenced, so we moved away from using the term "parklet", but like I said, it's envisioned to be kind of like a deck structure. If the vendor or leasing changes in the future, it can be easily removed. The agreement sets up responsibilities for maintenance and for such things, as well as the other things that have been put into place, such as the landscaping. They have large flower pots in front of landscaping, irrigation going to these flower pots and whatnot. And as mentioned, this is a situation potentially throughout the Old Town area, and so the second recommendation is to delegate authority to the Public Works Director for any future You do have some alternatives. We could not approve this agreement. But one of the things also talked about is the loss of the three parking spaces as part of the C Street, Central Galt Complete Streets project, which is under design right now. On the west side, on the side opposite, which is currently parallel parking, we're going to replace diagonal parking. And so at some future point, near future point, we work underdone by the city to, if you will, increase the amount of parking along 4th Street, all up and down from basically B Street all the way down to F Street. So I wanted to address that if there was a potential concern. As mentioned, alternatives, we could not, you could not authorize the Public Works Director or choose to approve this particular agreement with the Galt Place owners, but not authorize future agreements and have those agreements brought back before the council for review and approval. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Questions, council? I'm going to read the recommended actions. Do you want to read the recommended actions, please, for me? Adopt a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to execute revocable encroachment agreement for Galt Place drainage improvement and filing and recordation thereof, and to the Public Works Director to execute future revocable encroachment agreements upon concurrence with the city manager and city attorney. Call for, do I have a motion?
Second.
Did you first heard? I didn't hear yet.
I made a motion a long time ago.
Okay.
That's been forced to ready.
Oh, okay. Call for the vote, please. Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we have the approval of the final map subdivision improvement agreement for Creekside Unit 3.
Madam Mayor and council, this next item, we are pleased to bring before you the approval of the Creekside Unit 3 final map, and it's certainly the first final map on my watch as Public Works Director, but looking into the matter, I think it might be the first final map for many of you as council members. And in fact, we have to go back seven and a half years to find the last final map that was brought. There have been some tentative map approvals. So I think this is probably an indication that maybe, just maybe, the economy is going to turn a corner and developers are seeing potential, and there's currently some pent-up demand, a lot of approved tentative maps, and infill lots available, Creekside Unit 4 and some others. But as those are beginning to be built on and sold, I think that there is, we're getting a lot of community development, a lot of development interest inquiries, so we're hoping this is the beginning of some bright things to come for the city. And with that, Mr. Forrest, I'll give you a brief overview of the final map, what it consists of, as well as what we recommend for the subdivision agreement.
Good evening again. I'm actually quite excited about this, because I've been with the city coming on to close to eight years, and I was, eight years ago, I was ostensibly hired to be your development services engineer, and not my fault, development dried up pretty bad when I came on board with the city. So this, as Steve mentioned, this is the first subdivision final map that's been before the council since 2006. The Creekside 3 tentative map was approved by the planning commission back in 2007, and the recommendation for you is adopt the resolution approving the final map and the subdivision improvement agreement for Creekside Unit 3 and authorizing the filing and recordation thereof. The current owners of the Creekside 3 development, which as you can see on the vicinity map, is north side of Cos Road, north of the Creekside 4 subdivision that's been partially developed on the south side of Cos, bounded by, on the west side, by Joy Drive and the Galt Barno Cemetery, and then on the east side by South Lincoln Way. Creekside 3 is a 74-unit, I'm sorry, a 74-lot subdivision comprising 71 single-family residential lots and three-letter lots, three-lettered landscape lots to be dedicated to the city. Lot A is the portion along Joy Drive, north of Ellis Circle. Lot B continues the rest of the way of Joy Drive, all the way halfway along Cos Road to the intersection with Hamel. And then Lot C is the continuation of the landscape along Cos and then up Lincoln Way. The final map substantially conforms to the approved tentative map and the conditions of approval. All required fees have been paid, with the exception of the parking lieu fee that will be paid prior to the issuance of the first building permit for the subdivision. And final improvement plan checks, we just completed our second review of the subdivision improvement plans. The engineer is reviewing them, so it's anticipated that the subdivision improvement plans are very close to approval. And so upon approval of those plans, the remaining fees for the improvement plan check and the inspection of the improvements. Associated with the final map is subdivision improvement agreement. As this was the first one in a long time, Public Works, the city attorney, and staff took it upon themselves to say, let's take a look at the old agreement and make any necessary changes. We, without altering the significant content, we basically have the length from the prior agreements without sacrificing any content. Some key provisions of the subdivision improvement agreement is performance of work. I just, I thought we changed this in that it says, terms and conditions for completion of the necessary public improvements within a one-year period. Actually, the agreement is for 18 months. I wasn't taking of that, I thought it was...
Yeah, maybe I could just quickly interject. The agreement that is in your packet, unfortunately, was not the latest version that we worked on with the developer, so your resolution actually gives some leeway to work with city attorney to finalize the wording, as long as we bring the same general substantive content. There are some cleanups, that, some contact information for the developer, as well as contact information for the bonding companies, were some of the, sort of the cleanups that we've done to this. But essentially, with the exception of the 12-month versus 18-month, the agreement you see is generally what we'll be asking for final approval, and we are asking for 18 months at the developer's request to complete the improvement.
Any questions, council? Oh, sorry.
I've already touched upon the plan checking fees. There's a provision of annexations to LNL districts, the Tier 2 stormwater utility fee. Actually, they did all of that back in 2007, but it's a condition of approval. Subdivider is responsible for the maintenance of the street state landscaping for a period of one year. And that came about, actually, years ago, and it just made things easier, because typically you had a 90-day acceptance period, and then if a plant would die, there'd be finger pointing, so we just, a couple of years ago, we changed that to make the developer responsible for the landscape maintenance for a year, and then the city will take over that. I'm going to talk a little bit about the annexation there. There's some language regarding future annexations to districts yet to be named, and that may or may not occur, and relates to trying to make some of the northeast and the west side districts whole as a potential future assessment. But like I said, they've already annexed, and actually, if you look at the rolls for the district number 3, you will see 71 lots identifying to the Creekside 3. With that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be welcome to entertain them.
Council?
Yeah, I did have...
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't...
The, and Public Works Director points out, this is a new agreement. One thing that I don't see in here, and I don't know if it's, if it is, or maybe I'm just not seeing it, but there are tentative map conditions which survive the existence of this agreement, and since this is a recorded agreement, in the past, I know the city had a statement in the recitals of the subdivision agreement that one incorporates the conditions of tentative map. This makes reference to the tentative map, but not the conditions of the tentative map. And then, secondly, I think there was a reference to some of those conditions which survive the cessation of this agreement. And that goes back to '06 is the last time I looked at one of these fit.
Yeah, so I haven't had experience with Galt, but my experience with other communities is that if there's conditions of approval other than actual improvement-related requirements...
Correct.
That those conditions that are going to survive the filing of the final map actually appear on the final map. So that that's where the, those conditions would appear, and that the subdivision improvement agreement would just govern improvements required by the tentative subdivision map that are not completed at the time of approval of the final map. And so it provides a way for the city to enforce the construction of those improvements...
Right.
...post-recordation of the final map.
I mean, without having a list of the conditions of tentative map approval, it's hard to tell, and I can't read what's on the map, so I don't know. I mean, if you're going to redo this agreement, I think that was, because that was one of the issues, I can remember years ago, you have these conditions of approval, if they weren't incorporated by reference in the agreement, they'd get lost in translation, and then the subdivision's getting built, and something isn't being addressed. And that was, that was the big concern back then. It was just more of a stopgap measure to make sure that all conditions are actually met or addressed.
Yeah, I think the reason that they're also on the map is because if the, if those conditions are going to live beyond the time that the improvements are actually constructed, normally a developer or a property owner that acquires the property after the improvements have been completed... have been completed is not necessarily going to go and look at the subdivision improvement agreement because it will have been satisfied. So if the conditions are going to survive that term, then where they would normally look is the actual final subdivision map. And normally there's a part on that map where there would be a listing of conditions that are going to apply to the subdivision basically through its entire build-out.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's up for staff to look at, but I can't, I guess that's a question. I mean, was that addressed? Were the conditions reviewed for purposes of putting them on the tentative map?
There are several levels of review. The community development director and his staff review for items that are related to zoning and conditions of use and et cetera. And then the public works department is looking at the conditions related to public improvements and assessment districts and things like that. So yes, and as we're reviewing and approving the improvement plans, we're also looking to make sure any of those required conditions that would be exhibited through the improvements that are constructed would be part of the approved and required improvements for the subdivision. And if you look at recital A, it sort of references that, that it, you know, we're proved it's meant to be in compliance with the approved tentative map. And then there's actually a certification, several certifications on the face of the map and I apologize.
No, I can, I can read that. The one Tony signed does says that all the conditions have been met and/or provided for, which means if they're not here, then they've been addressed somewhere else. So that's the issue.
Yes, and that's typically done through some of the covenants that are in this agreement. For instance, will not, you know, oppose future formation of a district, annexation to a district. Those are some of the conditions of approval that we're trying to address.
Okay, okay. As long as they're satisfied that they're addressed.
They're addressed, make sure they are and are compliant.
This agreement is a completely different format than what the city used to use.
Yeah, I can't speak to history. I know that staff have been working closely with the city's attorney's office to try to clean up and streamline and modernize some of these agreements that we haven't done in a while.
Madam Mayor?
I forgot to introduce the developer's representative who is here, Dennis Gabe. He's a vice president for Benchmark Communities Central Valley Division. He's a vice president of entitlement and government affairs. Benchmark Communities, which is partnered with UCP and he can explain the relationship better than I can, is, Benchmark Communities will be the home builder and the subdivision improvement builder. So I just wanted to take the time to introduce him and I believe he has a few words.
Come on up, sir.
Madam Mayor, before this gentleman talks, I want to address a little bit the point that Councilmember Campion made on the satisfaction of the conditions. Because part of the process on approval of the final map is staff looks at the conditions that were imposed at the tentative subdivision map and makes sure that they've been satisfied. And that's one of the requirements for the approval of the final map. And there is a statement in the staff report that says they've been satisfied or taken care of. Looking forward to future maps because this is the, you know, this is hopefully the start of many more maps to come. One process that I've seen used in many communities is for staff to actually prepare a chart that shows the conditions imposed at the tentative subdivision map and it says how the, either, how the condition was satisfied, if it hasn't been satisfied, how it's being taken care of, say through the subdivision improvement agreement. And that's a good tool for the council to be able to confirm as you approve these final maps that in fact all of the conditions imposed earlier by the planning commission or the council have been taken care of. So maybe that's something we can explore as we, as we kind of gear up.
And I think planning has something like that in use and after the fact in terms of following up and including mitigation measures, which is exactly right.
In fact, if you remember, Councilmember Campion, we kind of changed the format of the conditions of approval and we added a column of, you know, when the condition was applicable, who was responsible to making sure that it was applied either in the improvement plans or the final map. And so.
I didn't know if this one, if this one was done that way or not.
Honestly, I can't remember.
Mayor Powers, members of the council, I'm pleased to appear before you this evening to urge your acceptance of the final map and the approval of the subdivision improvement agreement. And I will tell you that on the record, that we accept all of the tentative map conditions that transfer over under the government code to the final map and we're prepared to and are willing to conform to all of them, if that's of any help to you in arriving at a decision. I want to take a moment and give you a context for this development. Benchmark Communities' parent company is UCP Inc. And UCP Inc.'s stock is listed on the New York Stock Exchange. The headquarters office is in San Jose. We conduct business in a number of communities in California, in Washington State, in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee. And I mention that because I've been at this business for more decades than I care to disclose to you. And I have a context in which to evaluate how your community conducts business. Our company becomes an integral part of the communities in which we conduct business. That's part of our business model. This is our first venture into the community of Galt. We're pleased to be here. We hope to be here in a very constructive way. Our view of this development is that it would be mutually beneficial to both the city, members of the public, and citizenry in this community and our company as well. And I want to take this opportunity in that context to commend to you and compliment your public works department staff and your community development staff, the people with whom we and members of our staff have interacted with most closely, particularly Gulforus. But you have a, you have a good, constructive, accommodating, welcoming staff that nonetheless, and as a first priority, protects the public benefit. You should rest comfortably with that notion. And yet, your staff has the capacity and has evidenced the ability to welcome development into the community, to accommodate it in that public interest, and we're pleased for that obviously. So we look forward to development. We look forward to being a part of your community and we welcome your approval of the final map and the subdivision agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Forrest. I'm noticing on this map, you have found three-quarter inch rebar in several areas of the map. Does that indicate that there's going to be a sound wall or a barrier there?
The rebar that's referenced are survey markers and monuments and so.
Yes, because there's going to be a sound wall.
There's going to be a sound wall along Joy, along Cost, and along South Lincoln. And in fact, there's a condition of approval that the style of the wall, if you will, the aesthetic of the wall will actually change. And so as it fronts along South Lincoln Way, it will match the wall for the Russell Ranch and Creekside Development on the other side. And then as it turns upon or along Cost, it will switch and match the wall of the Creekside Four development. And then since there's only a rideaway fence associated with the cemetery, the sound wall will continue that Cost Road style, if you will, all up Joy. There won't be a sound wall along the north boundary.
Well, you're anticipating my follow-up questions. Thank you. I had one more question. Down on the southeast corner of the map, at the edge of the cul-de-sac, hatched area. Can you explain that a little bit?
That, a lot of right-of-way for roads in the Gulf area were set up by maps very much on a, on a large lot grid pattern. And so that hatch area reflects a granting of right-of-way for South Lincoln based on one of those old maps. As you can see, South Lincoln curves slightly to line up with the bridge across Dry Creek. And so that is now, if you will, access right-of-way that is being relinquished under the, under the provisions of this map. For example, if you look along the south side, you can see that the parcel line actually goes straight in the east-west direction while in reality, Cost Road curves up and meets South Lincoln in a perpendicular intersection. So that shaded area as well as the southern boundary are, if you will, remnants from the original map that set up a lot of these larger lots.
Are there going to be any improvements to that three-way section there of Cost and Lincoln and just before the Coast Bridge, are there going to be any street improvements or to, I mean, it's not a heavy-flow area, but I just wanted, was curious if there was going to be any improvements in that area to the road and the sidewalks and that kind of.
There'll be improvements along South Lincoln, Cost, and Joy within the limits of the subdivision. There's, the, nothing is required or contemplated south of the intersection of Cost, but curb, gutter, and sidewalk and pavement winding will happen along South Lincoln, along Cost. There'll be a wholesale improvement on Joy Drive.
Yeah.
In that there'll be curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides. As you travel to the north, the right-of-way for Joy will, will narrow a little bit to kind of match the existing improvement. And that related to existing improvements already associated with the cemetery and which we didn't want to disturb. And so the roadway will be improved with improved drainage, you know, as opposed to going to roadside ditches that frankly don't exist that well, to curb, gutter, and sidewalk and drainage system sidewalk for pedestrians on both sides and actually removal of some trees that block some of the sightlines along Joy.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Well, a couple of questions. Oh, Mr. Gentry, come out. Come on up, Mike.
My guy, the General Park company, been building in Galt since 1980. Just wanted to check and see if we're going to change the, how we do the park fees. This would be a good start to change them like every other community. As you know, the fine city of Galt is based on the final map, which that means the appraisal's greater than, let's say, if you go to Elk Grove or Low Die or wherever else compared to the tentative map, which naturally is going to be a lot less. And naturally, that makes a big difference because as you know, maybe you don't know, but when we did Creekside Two Unit Two, our park fees were two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for thirty-eight lots. And to me, that's very high in relationship to being able to put out a product. So I just think the council ought to look at that before we, as they say, all these tentative maps and final maps coming forward on the park fees in relationship to where they come from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry.
Okay, just quickly, we've had some citizens who've been concerned about the lighting on Lincoln Way where you're entering, I think, Ranch Road because there's a turn lane there. So could you describe for me the street lighting that would be along Lincoln Way? And then the other question is, between the sidewalk and the sound wall, will there be a planting area?
To answer your first question, there'll be street lighting all along, all the frontage as well as the interior streets. I require LED street lighting of this developer and so all along Lincoln, all throughout the subdivision as well as South Lincoln, will be LED streetlights. And particularly the ones along Cost and South Lincoln will be exactly the same LED streetlights that were installed by Walmart along their Twin Cities frontage. So as you may or may not be aware, with the LED lighting, it's very effective in terms of the, what's traditionally been installed as the high-pressure sodium, which is kind of an orangey ground light. And the LED light is, if you will, a clear bluer light. And the two, two things of benefit to the city is that they're long-lasting in terms of frequently the bulbs are guaranteed for seventy thousand hours or such, as well as they take less, far less energy to run. So, so with the combination of the addition of streetlights on the west side of South Lincoln, beam LED lights, beam highly effective, what's called effete, of, you know, lumens per watt, there's that. And I'm sorry, your second part was?
Is there a planting area between the sound wall and the sidewalk?
Along South Lincoln Way, the sidewalk will be a meandering, a curved sidewalk. It will touch along the curve and approximately, there's about a fifteen-foot landscape area between back of the curve and the sound wall. And so in areas where the sidewalk hugs, if you will, the back of curve and not meandering, you'll have a landscape strip very similar in nature to what you see on the south side of Cost with the Creekside Four development. Maybe not exactly, but along those lines.
My concern is that sound walls are a wonderful place for graffiti. And if we have a planting area where we can maybe have some vines or something growing on the sound wall, it sort of helps control the graffiti.
No, in fact, vines are a mandatory part of the planting plan to, as, as you mentioned, to screen or protect the sound wall from graffiti. So that was done for the south side development, Creekside Four. The vines have done very well covering up the majority of the wall and that will be the same planting plan, at least in terms of that aspect of the landscape.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. The motion was to adopt a resolution approving the final map and subdivision improvement agreement for Creekside Unit Three and authorizing the filing and recordation thereof. Do you have a motion? Can I hear a motion? Can I hear a motion? Second? Take call for the vote, please. Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to the city clerk's report and designation of a voting delegate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference in September.
The recommendation is to appoint a voting representative and up to two alternates as the city's voting delegate at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, which is in September, September 3rd through September 5th in Los Angeles this year.
Here we're all going, so that'll be something interesting. Good, that's great. Do I have... Doesn't anybody want to volunteer?
I nominate you.
No. No, 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 no. Do you want to vol... I nominate you.
I nominate you.
Mark's been doing it for...
He's been doing it three years now. I'll do it the Fourth of July.
Okay. So we've got... I've moved...
There you go.
We do need an alternate.
Two alternates. Okay. For the representative, I've moved Mark. Somebody want a second guess? Second guess? Okay, call for the vote.
Pick one. All of us did.
What about the alternate?
Do one at a time.
Okay.
Okay. Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, for an alternate, I nominate Councilmember Campion. Okay. Oh, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Do we need another one or we... Okay.
We need a minimum of one.
Okay. I think we're good. Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. So now we're at comments by staff, cruising around. Anybody here?
If you're looking this way, I'll go first since I haven't had a chance to say anything tonight. Set in just...
You've got two minutes, Mr. Winkler.
Keep up with Armando, and I've got a few minutes and counting here. Just one comment. You're seeing a lot and hearing a lot in the news about rulemaking that the State Water Resources Control Board is proposing relative to mandatory water conservation efforts and mandates on local jurisdictions. I haven't heard whether they pass that today. I'm sure there was going to be extended debate, as they've been doing for the past two days. But we are anticipating that they are going to approve those. And the city ordinance provides a four-phased, tiered approach to water conservation or drought emergencies. And if the state rules are approved as recommended, it'll probably force the city to go to stage three for stages, stage four being a drought emergency where we eliminate all outdoor watering. So that is not proposed. But what is proposed is that communities would have to move to outdoor watering no more than twice a week and then enforce that. It would also prohibit normal things that are already in our ordinance, even at stage one, for wasteful use of water. You can't have ornamental fountains that are just flowing water to waste. They have to be recirculated through a pump. And some of the standard things, restaurants are requested to serve water only upon request and all those things that you've heard about for years. But the key, I think, thing that's going to be imposed on cities if it approved is that we will have to go to mandatory restrictions on outdoor watering to no more than two days a week. Just wanted to give you a heads up and maybe bring in information, might have back to council. The city ordinance puts the determination of what phase we're in at the city manager's authority upon recommendation of the city engineer. So we'll be putting together, depending on what they do in Sacramento, over the next day or so, we'll be coming back with recommendations to the city manager, likely an information report to city council, perhaps as soon as August. So we're working on it.
Can I have a real quick question? Do you even have a way to enforce that or...
Well, they're fighting that this doesn't constitute a new mandate on local government and state to pay for because we can raise rates to pay for those actions. We have the authority in our ordinance code to impose these things. But then the question is, it's like a speed limit without enforcement. So they... I heard talk of imposing $5,000 fines on local agencies and up to $10,000 for failure to enforce, but I do not see that in the proposed regulation. I think those are just some of the things that are being discussed at the public comment forum. So we'll see what the final regulations look like. They're also talking about having any law enforcement officer or code enforcement officer, people who can already cite or write citations or infractions, being called upon to issue those types of citations and fines of up to $500 per day per violation on homeowners that violate that or residents. So they're serious about their proposed rulemaking. And I'd like to say we'll have to see what actually comes out of the crystal.
Well, the bummer is a lot of that watering goes on at night.
Well, that becomes a practical aspect of people are on tigers or walking in the middle of the night, which two days, they all get to discuss the two days so that we can then cite anybody who's not on those two days. It becomes a bit of an enforcement.
Yeah, I know. Okay, thank you. Anyone over here?
Since I haven't been able to say anything this evening so far, I guess I'll speak up. Just real quick, the planning commission had their regular meeting last week, but with that, we also had a spoken meeting for these few. It was pretty well-attended. We had, you know, several representatives from different agencies and whatnot, but also quite a few residents out in the area, so we were able to come up with a good list and quite a bit of interest in projects. So moving forward, the public comment carried on, they noted preparation for the Project CIR ends on July 23rd. And then from that point forward, we'll go ahead with the preparation of the CIR and moving forward.
Great. Mike, speaking hour forever. Hold your peace.
Well, much like Tony, I didn't say much tonight, but I just wanted to let everybody know the final version of the budget document will be available soon, as well as the budget in brief. So those should be available until next week or two.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you done? Are you done? Nope, you're not done.
Since Winkler pulled ahead of me and...
Oh.
I just... I actually want to just say a huge thank you to a couple of people for our independent state celebration. Friend of Renfro who ran our parade, successful parade, it was a spray. Our exhibit hall with April Angie, our 5K run with Robin Nelson and Sharon Hafner, our Public Works Department and their staff in helping us block off the streets, the police department with their caps, their officers and explorers, the support of city council, and the hard work of the Parks and Recreation staff. And I just wanted to mention some of our sponsors of Cal Waste continues to help the city with this event. Kaiser, Cardinal Glass, Smud, Walmart, Delta Physical Therapy, Les Schwab, Rayleigh's and Save Mart. I just want to say thank you for everybody, to everybody, for all their help because this is truly a city-wide event and all departments are helping us.
I think you sort of stole our thunder, but okay, moving on. Chief?
Happy to advise council that we had two new officers start work on Monday. And currently, we're one down. There's a possibility of losing a couple to a local agency. But we have some other people now who have finished the... Are finishing the process. So if in fact those two officers leave, we'll have somebody waiting in the wings.
Jason? Steve? Kurt?
No.
Mark?
Real quick, you missed one. Thank you. Thank you again. Good job coordinating. Who's responsible for the fireworks on the Fourth of July?
The council approved those, I mean, for...
I understand that part.
J and M Display, we've been working with them for the last few years now.
Awesome job. Kudos to them and to whoever brought them on.
Barbara, the parade was terrific. I just want to say that Brenda did a terrific job. I heard so many comments from the people saying how outstanding it was. Also, the Galt Shop Local will be having their vendors in the park on July 27th at Lake Canyon Park. And I was wondering, city manager or chief, did we ever get any report back? We had a petition brought about a month ago regarding elk hills and walnuts that's talking about... Oh, sorry, wrong person. Wanting a stop sign or something there. And I was wondering if we addressed that some time ago.
Just hoping Armando would take this one. We are... We're re-reviewing. We had looked at that in 2012 or so. We had some complaints about speeding and issues with the stop sign and the crosswalk. Candidly, to get valid counts and to look at the warrants for a stop sign at that location, we really need school to be in session because that's really when the concern is. And so we're holding off till September. And after school starts, we're going to take one last set of counts. Candidly, we don't see any accident record. And the counts historically have not met the technical warrant, but we are looking at the... Because of the routes to school, motion curvature, that perhaps one of the two, there's also a second intersection a little further east that they had also asked a separate group to ask that we look at. And we're probably... We're working on a strategy to perhaps put in stop control at one of those two locations such that we maybe solve two problems by slowing them down rather than giving them along straight away.
Are we staying in contact with the ladies that came or someone from that group so they know?
We haven't had any direct contact. We can certainly try to find out her contact information. Like I say, we got a petition with hundreds of names on it, so we didn't try to communicate with those hundreds of people. But be happy to reach out to the spokesperson and make that happen, let them know what we're waiting on at the school.
Thank you.
Mike?
Mike, Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank... First of all, I had a great time and I hope everybody else did. I hope they enjoyed the band and the festivities. I just... I love that damn home feel. But there is another group I want to thank, and that was the SERC team that was out there providing first aid in case we needed it. And it's not any fault of yours, Armando, it's just something that's one of my things. But that's all I had. And I loved the parade and I really loved that we had our citizens out there and everybody just waving. I love watching the little kids and their innocence. I just have a good time with that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I had a great time too. The Gold Time County Fair was really great too because a lot of people brought in paintings and that was awesome. The parade was good. All the city staff did a really, really great job of working really hard, not just on the Fourth of July, but we start planning in December. When's our first meeting? December something? Yeah.
The first we got heard.
Okay. And I'm very thankful for everybody that works very hard on this. And the person that is the glue that keeps it all together is you, Mr. Solis. And you do a great job. And every year it just gets better and better and is running smoother and smoother and smoother. I want to thank you very much. Okay, with that, done.